Take the time and welcome everyone out to our Leighton City Council meeting this evening. The day is November 20th and our start time is on time at 7 o'clock. I appreciate those in attendance, but as you know, we like to always start our meetings with a prayer and a pledge when we take terms each month. So I'm going to turn the time over to Councilmember Thomas to conduct.
Mr. Chair.
To conduct.
Okay. I'll give the prayer, then we'll get up and have the pledge, please. Our Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful to be gathered tonight to talk about Leighton City. We ask that Thy Spirit might attend us, that as we do talk about Leighton City, that we will be mindful of what we're saying, be kind in how we say it, but be truthful in what we're trying to say. We're thankful for this great land that allows us opportunity to do the things which we're doing tonight. We're thankful for the people that look into the things that go on within this city and voice their opinions so that we might be able to make decisions with the best knowledge. This I say in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Appreciate that. I'd like to make a special acknowledgement that Councilman Roberts is not with us. He asked for it to be excused. However, I do notice our incoming council member on the front row there that will be taking the oath of office in January, so Mike Clindranis, welcome. Glad you're here with us tonight. Okay, council, we do have one set of minutes that we need to approve. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to look at them, see if you have any changes. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of Leighton City Council work meeting, October 2nd, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go down to our municipal announcements at this time. I know that Tyson usually reads off what the Parks and Rec Department has going on, and he really didn't assign anyone, so I'll just go ahead and mention them for him. First off, this Saturday is the Turkey Bowl, which is always a fun event to participate in. I know that the lanes are pretty well already called for, however, there may be, there's this breaking news that's just now hitting the news desk at this moment, so the Parks and Rec team gets to deal with a, two lanes that could become available at the 4:00 hour. So if you want to do a lottery draw, or however you guys want to handle that, we'll be happy to turn those over. Initially, the, myself and the council, we usually challenge another city, and unfortunately the other city backed out on us, and then we had a second city and they backed out, and our third city backed out. So we're saying it's time to let the citizens have it this year, but we'll be back for a challenge next year on the Turkey Bowl. Then, on Monday, we have our holiday lighting ceremony out here in the new pavilion, and the start time on that is 6:00 PM. And so we encourage everyone to come out and show your support. We have Crestview Elementary School that will be participating, as well as the Dayton Community Band. And this year is, we're going to do something a little different. We're actually going to have a dual lighting ceremony. So we'll have one for the nativity scene and then one for the, for the park lights. So again, I encourage everyone to come out at that at 6:00 PM. If you haven't already and would like to participate in the Nutcracker Display, our Leighton Museum here this year is going to have a Nutcracker Display. And from what I understand, they've got a lot of them already. Is that correct, Marie? And yet, they would still take a few more if anybody would like to bring in their favorite Nutcracker that they own, or might have a small collection that they want to be on display. We'd love to do that, so that all of our residents can kind of see the variety of, the showcase that they'll be putting together. And that exhibit will run from the 27th of November through December 23rd. And of course, as we've announced in the past, with America 250, our celebration, our Leighton Museum was the first one recipient of the traveling display for the state that is currently on the wall at the museum for you to come see, and it's called "The Pen is My Dear: The Writing of the Revolution." So it's a great educational tool, and keep in mind, this is just a small portion of the actual display that is on display in Salt Lake, but this is part of the traveling one. And like I said, Leighton was the first museum to receive that, so that's kind of cool. Other than that, I'll turn the time over to anybody else that would, if they have any other announcements they'd like to make. None? Okay. Well, then I hope everyone will enjoy the lights and get out of your car and walk around and really embrace it. There will be hot chocolate and churros again that will be distributed through the Leighton Rotary, and the train will be running as well. The train will be primarily Tuesday through Sunday? Excuse me, Tuesday through Saturday. And the Leighton City will have their free family hayrides on December 3rd, so it will not be running that night. And if you want to come and enjoy the hayrides, then again, it's here at the Commons Park. And is the staging, where are you going to have your staging?
For the train.
No, for your hayrides.
Same place as the train.
Same place as the train? Okay, great. That makes it easy. So the hayrides are going to be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on December 3rd. One thing I want to make sure that everyone realizes, this year we have changed the staging area for the train. It is going to be in the east parking lot by the seminary. So that will be the staging area, as well as the cocoa will be sold there, so that on those cold nights, if you want to kind of go into the pavilion, it might take the chill off. So, all right, that's enough rattling on. I'll go ahead and get going with our regular scheduled meeting here this evening. And we actually have a fairly light agenda, so I'm just going to go ahead and jump into our citizens' comment at this time. So anyone who's here that would like to address this governing body, you're more than welcome to. You can step up to the podium on either side. Please state your name, what city you're from, and then your purpose.
Good evening, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. It's my second time coming. John Atkins from West Point. Just wanted to come up and introduce myself to everyone. I am running for Davis County Sheriff this coming year. Just wanted to share about three minutes, a little bit about myself. Worked the Sheriff's Office currently. Been doing internal affairs for the office the past three years. Came from military background as well. I am a veteran, spent 14 years so far in the military, still in the Reserve Service, nine of which with the police, military police, on the Army and Air Force side, and currently an intelligence officer with the Air Force. Do work part-time as a firefighter, paramedic, have done that for the past three years, North Davis Fire. Love Davis County, spent most of my life here. I've left, gone overseas, lived over there, lived out of the state. I do love living here. I believe in good, efficient government. I believe in accountability, and I believe in working with other individuals like yourselves so we can serve the people the best we can. I do have a few cards, if anyone's interested, I'll leave them at the door on the way out, but thank you for your time this evening.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm Megan Smock. I live in Syracuse, but I am a pet sitter and dog walker that covers Leighton, so I am well aware of all the dog owners and the dogs and the yards and the houses. So I just wanted, I'm just here about the dog park. We are excited that there is a potential location being looked into. We're really hopeful about that, because Leighton needs a dog park. There's way too many homeowners, dog owners, without yards, without a place to take their dogs, to run, to play, to socialize, to build community, and we just really want that to be an option for Leighton citizens. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tammy Ellis, and I'm also here about the dog park. I have a border collie. I cannot exercise him anywhere because walking a border collie isn't realistic. I need a dog park. We all need a dog park. And I think it's a little strange that we don't have one already, honestly, because it seems like every other city I know has one. I have to drive to South Weber if I want to go take my dog to the dog park, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time? Okay. Being that there's none, I'm going to go ahead and go on to our consent items. Mr. Dave Price is going to present this one item that we have as our consent item this evening regarding the reenactment of our Recreation Arts Museum and Parks sales tax.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This evening, I have the pleasure of introducing ordinance 2525. If adopted, this ordinance will enact a Recreation Arts Museum and Parks, or RAMP, sales tax of 1/10th to 1% on appropriate taxable sales within Leighton City, beginning April 1st, 2026. In 2015, Leighton City voters approved a local sales tax, sales and use tax to support RAMP initiative. For the last 10 years, this RAMP tax has provided support for recreation, arts museum, and parks within Leighton City. On November 4th of 2025, the voters of Leighton City authorized the City Council to impose a RAMP tax by an overwhelming margin of 75%. The City Council may adopt ordinance 2525 to enact the RAMP tax and send notice to the Utah State Tax Commission, informing them of the vote of the people and the passage of this ordinance enacting the RAMP tax. This ordinance will impose a sales tax of 1/10th to 1% on all appropriate taxable sales beginning the 1st of April, and run for 10 years, with the potential to be renewed by voters in the city on, in 2035. The staff recommends the Council adopt ordinance 2525, reenacting the RAMP sales tax and on appropriate taxable sales within Leighton, and authorize the Mayor to sign the necessary documents. This evening, if I could, I'd like to also recognize a few people that have helped us in this effort. The first would be our Mayor, Joy Petrol, for her work with the committee. I'd also like to recognize our wonderful staff, including Kimberly and Joellen, who worked tirelessly on this. But most importantly this evening, I'd like to recognize the community-minded, hard-working group of residents who together created a political information committee to advocate for the successful election of this tax. This group of residents incorporated with the state of Utah, successfully raised funds for the campaign, created a Yes for Leighton RAMP website, produced campaign signs, and campaigned in person, all to educate the Leighton residents about what RAMP is. I would also like to recognize and thank Daniella Harding and Bruce Finch for their work leading the political information committee as co-chairs. If you guys could join us up here or join me. And also thank Brandon Stoffer and Jake Boyle, who's not here this evening, for serving on the steering committee, and who quite simply got the work done. If we could, would like to have all the members of the political information committee stand up that are here this evening, so that we can recognize them for their hard work and thank them for the successful passing of the RAMP tax. And then if it's appropriate, Mayor, would like to give Daniella a chance to talk a little about the campaign that she and her friends went through.
Absolutely.
Mayor, council, first and foremost, thank you to the incredible people who made this effort possible, to all the members of the Leighton RAMP pick committee. We did it. My heartfelt thanks for your dedication, your hours of work, your belief and efforts in getting this renewed was inspiring. Our entire Leighton RAMP pick committee would like to give a very special thank you to Leighton Mayor Joy Petro. Mayor Petro was absolutely tenacious in getting us the resources we needed. She was generous with her time, unwavering in her support, and constantly motivating us to keep this effort moving forward. Mayor Petro, we are deeply grateful. Thank you. Want to extend a heartfelt thanks to my co-chair, Bruce Finch. Bruce, your leadership, your consistency, and your commitment kept us on track, and we could not have done this without you. And to the members of our steering committee, Brandon Stoffer of OPA, over there, and Jake Boyle, who's not here tonight, thank you for your willingness to step in wherever you were needed. Finally, a massive thank you goes out to Leighton Parks and Rec, especially to Dave Price and Kimberly Zagmat, over there. Truly, we could not have done this without your help. You were the bridge between our committee and the citizens of Leighton. Your expertise, your coordination, and your belief in RAMP powered so much of this effort. And to the entire RAMP Commission and Chair Cameron Cross, we thank you for your leadership and for stewarding this program with such care. Your work laid the foundation that allowed this renewal effort to succeed. Now, let me say one last thing. I think some of the residents may be wondering who we are, and the answer is very simple. We are just a group of citizens who simply believe in Leighton. We believe in our recreation, in our arts, our museums, and our parks. We believe in strong public spaces and opportunities for our Leighton families, and in making Leighton the best place to live, work, and play. So we want to thank the voters of Leighton for voting to renew RAMP for another 10 years. Your support means that residents will have continued access to quality programming, and they will continue to thrive. Just today, someone stopped me to tell me how much they loved RAMP, and specifically, they loved the free concerts on Sunday nights. And this is what, this is what this is all about. It's Leighton residents enjoying our community. And so we are so proud to have been part of something that will continue to enhance and beautify our community. We're so grateful that this has been renewed and cannot wait to see the good it brings over the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to speak to the support of the citizens, 75%. That's just overwhelming support. And thank, thank you to the citizens and to this body here and the RAMP Commission. It has been 10 years that this has been going on, and because of your quality stewardship of the monies, that it remains very popular. And I hope we do that going forward, that we're mindful of this is the citizens' money, and we're going to do what's right for our citizens. And thank you for having done that in the past, and hopefully we can go forward and do that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor and council. If you have any questions about the ordinance this evening?
Counsel, do you have any questions, or if you'd like to make any comments? Because I know it's an opportunity to actually thanks the folks as well, so.
Yeah, I'll start out there.
Before we take any action.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to Daniella and Bruce for chairing this, and Brandon as well. I just, the fact that, that we can get 75% of people to believe or agree on anything is pretty amazing, right? If you put some, some just rudimentary questions on the ballot, I don't know if you'd get 75% of people believing on one side or the other. So I just thank you for your time and efforts and energies. We do treat these funds, to your point, Bruce, very, we have stewardship over them, and we want to make sure that people can see what they're getting for their money. Because when it, we have a representative government here where we get elected, you know, for four-year terms, and we come up here and make a lot of decisions, then we come back and we get re-approved, or we don't, right? But when we put a ballot initiative, or we put some, some question on the ballot, how do you want to do it, citizens? It's really like true democracy, right? And so the ability to say, well, we, all five of us, including the Mayor, all six of us would have, would love to have RAMP continue, but it's an additional affirmation to know that the residents at such large percentages are wanting to do the same thing. So we do take these, this money seriously, and I think it's just such a great program, where it's not just the residents who pay it when they go to Target, it's people from other cities who come in and use our hotels and use our shops, that they can help fund some projects for here in the city. So thank you again, I'm glad that you guys were here, that we could tell you that face to face for all the work that you did, so thank you.
Very good. Anyone else?
20 years ago, I think, I can't, I'm not young enough to remember a lot of things, we decided to do RAMP. I think we called it something else, I can't remember. Anyway, it's one of the few times in my life that I was glad I failed. It got voted down. No one wanted it. It was going to be county-wide, blah, 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 blah. And we put a lot of time and effort, probably, probably not as much as you guys did, but we put a lot of time and effort in it, and they voted against it. And I was pretty upset. And then, I don't know how much longer, I don't think it was 10 years, but maybe eight years later, we put it in as a city initiative, and it passed. And at that time, I realized I was glad we failed before, because then we'd have to share all our money with the county. Now we're sharing all the money with Leighton City. And the things that RAMP has done is just phenomenal. I mean, things have grown, things have happened that wouldn't have happened without it. And I see in the next 10 years, it's just going to get better, you know? And that, and I know they're having a
Listening session.
A listening session. When's that?
I'll let Clinton talk to that.
December 15th.
December 15th. And ask for anybody that wants to come and talk about RAMP. People that have received money, people that didn't receive money, that applied, whatever. And so that maybe they can critique it. And like a good friend of mine, Mr. Disney, not Mr. Disney, but I call him Mr. Disney, he calls it plus-ing. You don't change things, he's just making better. And I think that's what this thing will do, will make it better. So, good job, and I'm glad it's still going.
I just want to thank the, excuse me, the committee, and those of you who are present, and of course, the citizens who voted for it. There were so many questions, when you hear attacks, that's a big ugly word that none of us like, right? But there was so much collaboration and so much effort on behalf of residents to help their other fellow residents understand what it really was and what it meant. And so I just want to give kudos to all of you who are here, because you were volunteering your time. And I don't know if the residents who you were talking to knew that. I mean, they, they knew you were, you know, helping, because either you were a citizen, a resident, or you participated in some way. But all of the hours that you guys put in was phenomenal as well. So I want to thank you for putting in that time and that effort to make something, or to bring this back to our city and help residents understand the benefit. I mean, 17 million, that's a lot. And people didn't really understand that if we don't have this tax, then either services and programs are cut, or that money goes from somewhere. And so thank you for the time that you all put in to help Leighton continue to provide the services that we provide for all of us.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to add my congratulations and thanks to the pick committee, Daniella and Bruce and Brandon, and your hard work, you're getting us all excited about getting this reauthorized and getting the word out, the signs and all of that. I like to, I like to say that cities exist, probably heard this 1,000 times, two main reasons. One is to deliver essential services. Think EMS and your water and the police and sewer, all the things you don't even think about that happen on a daily basis. And that happens with, with the good, good employees of Leighton City on our behalf. And the second reason is to, to create a place, a hometown, a place you want to be from, a place you want to come home to, a place you want to recreate, a place you want to play, a place you want to tell people to come and enjoy. That's what this helps to enhance in Leighton City. And the, and the citizens of Leighton understand that. 75%, I guess, the question was asked in the RAMP Commission meeting this last Monday about the percentage back in 2015, and Mr. Price mentioned it was in the high 60s, I think.
68, was it?
65.
65.
So 65%, now 75% with 10 years more voters. And so overwhelming support for this. This doesn't, also doesn't happen without the, the work of the, of the commissioners on the RAMP Commission. Where this is in other places, other municipalities or counties, sometimes they don't have commissions to do this, to vet the, the grants. It's just the City Council or the County Commission that decides what to do with it. And, but I like the way we do it. We have citizens here helping to vet, helping to, with the applications, balance all the interests, and it's, it's served us, it's served us well. That's a great help to us as, as, as the City Council. And so, a couple more things. Dave mentioned, we're going to have a, a listening session as we move forward. Things change over 10 years. The ordinance that was created 10 years ago to authorize this, we're going to, we're going to relook at it. Should we tweak it? Should we add? Should we, we don't know. But we want to listen to, to all of you, and as we discuss that moving forward, whether we change, or how we change, or the ordinance. So on December 15th, which would be the next regularly scheduled RAMP meeting, from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock, and I believe it's going to be here in the council chambers, correct? Yeah, Kimberly says yes. We'll be able to hear from, from you, from the public, on your feelings about that. So if you're interested, please be here for that. And then finally, back to the commission, we have some spots available on the RAMP Commission, if any at all want to come and talk with Mayor Petro. I believe if you go on the, on the website under Parks and Rec, there's the application process to, for both Parks and Rec and the RAMP Commission. So if you're interested, you can go there and get more information. They would love to have you come serve with them. It's, I'll say it's some work, but it's worth it. And you can, you can see that how appreciative the citizens of Leighton are by overwhelming the support of RAMP. So that, that work that you do is worth it. So once again, thanks for all your efforts, and thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And that is quite a process to go through for the commission, but I'm not one to repeat, so I'm not going to repeat, but I certainly embrace everything that's been said up here tonight. And I do sincerely want to extend my appreciation to the entire RAMP Commission, or Pick Committee as well. And I'll just make one comment. I was fortunate enough to be involved with the first time we ran this, and how hard it was. And we started out with a pretty large group, and in the end, we ended up with maybe five total, three to five people is all in the end, by time we got to the election process and the day of the election. My hat's off to this committee. Pretty much everybody stayed involved, and they Pretty much everybody stayed involved and they ran this and they worked their hinnies off and they put in tons of hours. So I want to acknowledge that and say thank you again because it did take a full team effort to pull this off and to get that type of a win. So I will just close by saying thank you for a wonderful birthday gift because that's exactly what I wanted, was Ramp to pass and you guys delivered, so thank you very much. Okay, with that, council, I'll go ahead and bring it back then for action regarding ordinance 25-25 regarding the Ramp sales tax. Yeah, you need to do this.
Thanks, Mayor. Madam Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 2525, the reenacting of Recreation Arts Museum and Parks Ramp Sales Tax on one-tenth of 1% of taxable sales within Leighton City.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we adopt the ordinance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. That's a unanimous vote that I am glad to hear. Just for point of clarification, and then I'll move on. We are, as mentioned earlier, we're open to the ideas, suggestions and enhancements. However, I want you to know that that will not go into effect on this cycle right now, that currently they're accepting applications. But it will start with the next cycle, which would be in 2026, which is the new cycle of the 10-year process. So I just want you guys to be aware of that. Okay, let's go ahead and move on then to our public hearing portion of our meeting. Mr. Steve Jackson is going to present our first item here, which is an adoption of the Sewer Impact Facility Plan.
Mayor, council, it's good to be with you tonight. For your consideration is ordinance 2552, which is the adoption of the Sewer Impact Fee Facilities Plan and Sewer Impact Fee Analysis. The purpose of the Sewer Impact Fee Facilities Plan and Sewer Impact Fee Analysis is that as the city has created the Wastewater Master Plan, it was updated in June of 2024, we worked with Bowen and Collins and Associates to map out the future infrastructure needs of the city and identify areas of improvement that need to be taken care of, but also recommend any areas where future growth would need to be addressed. Part of that recommendation from the Wastewater Master Plan was to evaluate potential sewer impact fees to assist in funding improvements related to growth. As you know, we have impact fees for our water system and our transportation system and our storm drain system, but we have not had a impact fee for our sewer system because most of the projects and most of the funding or most of the infrastructure has been built by development as a very minimal-sized pipe. North Davis Sewer District is one of our partners that we send our wastewater to. They do have impact fees that they use to build the larger transmission lines and conveyance systems that they have. What we're seeing is throughout the city is growth and densities are increasing that there are some impacts that need to be addressed in the future. Our existing system is 218 miles of pipe, anywhere from 8 to 18 inches in diameter. As you can see, this is a slide that shows the existing growth or, excuse me, the existing baseline density that we have based on our current land uses. And as Bowen and Collins evaluates that and then projects the growth into the future, this chart shows that currently we have what are, we call them ERUs or Equivalent Residential Units, which is the calculation of the wastewater production from each one of the homes and businesses in the community. So we're roughly 32,000 ERUs currently, projected to be almost 60,500 ERUs in 2060. So we will see a growth of wastewater usage over that term and so we need to plan for that. So this slide is for the future build-out density that is anticipated through the models and so we want to be able to address that effectively and efficiently, provide the level of service that we all expect and that we've established here for Leighton City. So as part of that Wastewater Master Plan, they identified different projects. They're shown in the kind of purplish pink color on the map and with that, the costs of those over the timeline of this master plan is roughly $18 million. The first 10-year window is a little bit smaller, projects, there's only four of them in there totaling an estimated $5.16 million as we look into the future. So what we did was we went through this Sewer Impact Fee Facilities Plan and in there, Bowen and Collins and Associates helps to identify sewer improvements needed to only, or sewer improvements needed to accommodate anticipated development. We all know development's coming, we just want to be able to plan appropriately for that. And so existing deficiencies are not included in this plan. They have to be addressed through the regular user fees that are charged to the people on the system. But growth-related, this plan complies with Utah Code for the Impact Fee Act based on these growth projections in the Wastewater Master Plan over the next 10 years. So it doesn't include those operation and maintenance projects and then it maintains our level of service, which is the flow ratio of .75 for the pipeline capacities. So as you can see on this slide, we anticipate a growth of about 10,700 ERUs as we move forward. The existing capacity of our system, the collection system is about 60.65% that has been used. We anticipate 16.5% of that will be used up over the next 10 years and then 22.77 is what's remaining, is that capacity. So as we look at that with our Impact Fee Facilities Plan, we basically say which projects need to be done in order to accommodate that growth. Four projects were identified, as you can see in the chart on the bottom there, 5.74 million is the cost with 1.88 million being impact fee eligible. Some of the projects there, you can see like Project 4, it says that 98% of that needs to be paid for by the existing users. But then Project 5 there says that 3.92 needs to be paid for by the existing users and the rest could be covered in the growth over that time. So that's how they calculate that out to come up with the 1.88 million dollars that is eligible for impact fee collection. This slide highlights the four projects on the list. Basically Gordon Avenue, up on East Gentile and then Sugar Street are the four areas, or three areas, excuse me, with four separate projects that would be eligible for these fees to be used. Just to make sure that we're clear, there is a separate impact fee, North Davis Sewer District charges for any of the systems that are connecting to them and you can see those fees there. Again, they break them into single-family residential, town home, multi-unit and transit-oriented development types and then non-residentials per 1,000 gallons cost. So the second component to this study, or I guess it's the third component, Wastewater Master Plan and then the Impact Fee Facilities Plan is the Impact Fee Analysis. And that was prepared under the direction of the city with Bowen and Collins and Zion Public Finance to help with this. So again, it calculates what the fee should be for the, how do we actually come up with the fee that we need to charge to be able to proportionately share the growth costs with the system? Again, it complies with the Impact Fee Act and it's based on this Impact Fee Facilities Plan. The fees are based on an ERU basis, so each unit would be calculated to be an ERU and then calculated out on that. Again, the fees have to be spent or encumbered within six years after the fee is paid per the state laws and then they can be implemented 90 days following adoption by the city council. So the fee, the gross fee per ERU is $429.96. Again, based on that 10,724 ERUs by 2034. Below you can see the breakdown of how that fee is calculated. People who are buying into the existing capacity that's in the system would pay the 247.53 and then, and then the new construction costs are 175.40. And then we can also allow for the consultant costs to prepare these plans in there. So that's a $7.03 charge for that total of 429.96. So then also on that, we need to take into account that there is some existing capacities that we need to address as existed, by the existing users. And so we've credited back on those fees, $2.39 million over 10 years. So you can see on the right side of the screen, the fee schedule that we were recommending starts out at $386.81 for that first year and then gradually increases over time to reach the 425.19. So what does that mean as you're looking at it from a single-family home perspective? This first column there, single-family is one ERU, that's the basis for everything. So that chart is the same as the max fees per year on this side. Town homes use a little bit less than a single-family home and so they're .9 of that. Multi-families, .76 and then the TOD residential's .61. So we're recommending the adoption of these fee schedules so that we can apply those appropriately as each different development type comes throughout the city. And then for any non-residentials, it's based on the meter size, the water meter size, there's a meter ratio there. So for example, a 5/8 inch meter would be one ERU essentially, and so that's how that comes out to the 386.81. Two-inch meter would be eight as the meter ratio goes and so on. So with that, staff is recommending that council and open the discussion to public comment, take public comment. And then I'm happy to answer any questions before that happens and then we'll bring it back for discussion, I guess, so, if you'd like.
Do you have any questions for real? Open it up.
I have a question.
Sure.
It's okay. Maybe a comment first and a question. This, you said 218 miles of pipe under the ground?
Yes.
And we don't even see it. And it takes care of, I was just talking about essential services. This is one of the most essential.
Yeah, nobody likes it when this one doesn't work.
Exactly. You just, you just assume it's always going to work. What I appreciate here, two things. One is that the growth is, you're paying for the growth where it's happening. That's, I like that. And then, second, the idea of you're looking into the future and planning. Just kudos to the team, to you and your team, forward-thinking as we move, as we move. It's just, it goes, I think it goes unsaid, but thank you. And my question, you mentioned the, I know impact fees, it's stated in there, they have to be paid within six years or encumbered. How long is that encumbrance timeframe before you?
I'm not, to be honest, I'm not really sure. We don't keep them that long.
Okay.
We don't make it to six years because we need the money to fund these projects and so.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it needs to be a reasonable timeframe. I think if we were to ask Mr. Drake there, he would tell us that we need to spend them and get them moving, so.
Yeah, I think it's basically within the next fiscal year, like you encumber it for that year or the coming year and that's it.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, maybe just one. So I mean, when we adopt our fee schedule as part of our budget, that will just be one of the line items on here moving forward. I guess I'm talking about the last slide that had all of the list of costs throughout time and I'm assuming that we, we would have the ability if circumstances dictated to raise those or to manage those, not just based on a schedule.
Yes, you would be able to review those. What this, what this schedule would say is this is the maximum you can charge for that given year.
Okay, so if there was something that was, like something in the industry caused you not to be able to get certain something, right, that, but this is the maximum of what we could, what we could charge in the future.
Based on, based on this plan, we would have to revise not only the Impact Fee Facilities Plan, but the Impact Fee Analysis in order to increase them any more than what's on these schedules, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But you can do that.
Yes, you can.
Thanks, Steve. I just want to kind of piggyback on the question I asked in the work meeting and just probably for the benefit of the public and those watching and whoever doesn't understand the impact fees, because we talk about fees and taxes and things of that nature. And so when we are presenting this and we see all of these numbers and all of these fees, can you just give a quick explanation about the impact fees and who those fees are charged to, who pays them, where they come from?
Yeah, so the impact fees are only allowed to be charged for growth-related projects and that's what this entire analysis is, is to say what is the impact of a new growth development coming in? So the fees are charged to any new development that occurs. So every new building permit for a home would be charged this fee for a single-family. A town home would obviously be charged the town home fee, things like that. So any new development that comes in, it doesn't go back on anybody existing in the city, it's just for new development, for new growth. And then those fees specifically have to be used on those four projects right now. Our lists for other impact fees are a lot longer, but for this one, only those four projects can, the fees be spent on and only in those percentages. So we cannot use them for anything we want, they have to be specific to those projects. So, thank you.
Okay. There's no other comments or questions, then I'd look for action to open up our public hearing at this time.
Madam Mayor, I move that we open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone who wishes to comment on this particular item, please come up to the podium, state your name and what city you're from and then your comments. You can, you can ask a question for this item here, yes?
Hi, my name is Irene Hill and I just had a question for the gentleman that was talking. What exactly are the four places that this is going to affect? You said the new developments, right? So where are those at, do you know? Can you repeat that? Sorry.
So the four project areas is Gordon Avenue is where the project, it's West Gordon over by Hillfield Road. And then there's one at East Gentile, which is up near Highway 89 and then Sugar Street between Hillfield Road and Gentile are the four projects that are eligible for these fees.
So it only impacts, so from my understanding, it'll only impact the residents in that area, the new developments, right?
So it'll, it'll impact developments across the city. Every new development will pay these impact fees to help fund these four growth-related projects.
But it's new development, not existing?
Correct. That's my other way to make sure.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, seeing that there's no other comments, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council to close our public hearing and take action.
If I could, real quick, Mayor, we would recommend that the council adopt Resolution 2552 and with an implementation date of February 23rd, 2026 on the fees to meet the 90-day requirement.
Okay. Is one of you guys going to make a motion here?
Sure, I'll do it. Madam Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and adopt Resolution 25-52 with an implementation date of February 23rd, 2026.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, it's been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 25-52. I need to take a roll call vote on this. So Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Member Smith Edmison?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bloxham?
Yes.
Okay, there you have it. That's unanimous on that particular item. Okay.
Aye.
We'll now move on to item number B of our public hearing, which is a general plan amendment and McIntyre, excuse me, Brad. I remembered your last, McEnrath, I remembered your last one. He'll be presenting this item.
Not a problem, Mayor. Thank you. Happy to present this item to the mayor and council tonight. As stated previously, the water use and preservation element, it was a requirement of, it's a requirement of Utah State Code, which the code recently changed. requirement of Utah State Code, which the code recently changed within the last month. It's now 10-20-404. It was previously 10-9A-403. All the language is still there, it's just reorganized in different spots. This was something that was required by this Utah State Legislature a few years ago and incorporated into state code in that section. And each city has to adopt a water use and preservation element by December 31 of this year. There are specific objectives that are outlined in state code that we need to address, and then we also need to coordinate with the Department of Natural Resources, Public Works, whoever our water purveyor is, which for us, luckily, it's our Public Works staff, as well as Weber Basin. These are, this is just an overview of the objectives. Just to summarize these, what it really hits at is the impacts of existing development on our water infrastructure and water demand, as well as the impacts of future development on our water resources, and identifying methods that we can be more water-efficient in our use, and also identifying opportunities that the city can modify our practices or operations to reduce or eliminate waste water, wasteful water practices. And then the last one is to consider the impact of the city's water use on the Great Salt Lake. As one of the cities that is within the Great Salt Lake watershed, we are identified as one of those that has to do that. Some cities don't need to because they're not in the watershed, but we have the opportunity to do that. Some of the language here I've included, I won't go through it in detail, but this is just some of the language that's in state code that, of things that we need to address through this water element. Wanted to bring this up, as I mentioned in the work session, based upon some of the recommendations and the conversation that we had with the planning commission when they recommended the approval of this, was to make sure that some of the language and the details that we have in here are really hitting at these different things. Bullet point number four on that first one is the elimination or regulation of ponds, pools, and other features that promote unnecessary water evaporation. So a lot of detail in the plan does talk about some examples that are out there of use of pools and size of pools and addressing evaporation, and we have that detail there as we've discussed before. This is just an overview of the different sections of the element. We talk about the existing efforts that the city has made. We've made a lot of really good strides in water conservation, so we wanted to highlight that in this element, as well as our community and water profile. A lot of the information, the data that we gather from Public Works and understanding where our water comes from, where our resources, the different, you've got Weber Basin, our city water infrastructure, our wells, where is it all coming from and where is it, where is it all being sent? And then water use considerations, I'll go through those just briefly. And then also water quality considerations, that's really related to stormwater and how, when we have stormwater, how it gets to Great Salt Lake, as well as our rivers and streams. And then city operations, that one I'll be really brief, just overview on that, is that our city operations, and when we did an analysis of it, we are doing a really good job. Again, just as our Public Works staff got a lot of kudos for the work that they did on our wastewater system, the work that they're doing in making sure that our water infrastructure is being efficient, that we're reducing the amount of loss that we have within our system and upgrading it, it's just continual efforts for continual improvement. And so they're doing a lot of great work there. And then finally, the considerations of Great Salt Lake. So these are just some water use considerations that are included in the plan. First one is to continue to promote diversity of housing options in new development. As that happens, you can see that we were able to gather through the research in creating this, these considerations, is that where there are diversity of housing options, you see greater water efficiency. Doesn't mean that there's not a use, greater use in some and others, but there's water, greater water efficiency overall. And then water-intensive amenities in new residential development. If you're familiar with this, this is out in Syracuse. What's really funny is if you were to take an opposite image of this, you'd see these artificial ski lakes and then a lake that's drying up. You know, and so you see there's a lot of water-intensive amenities, these are, this is one of them, but some amenities in new residential development include water features, different things like that, that maybe aren't necessary for our specific climate. Turf grass restrictions and water-wise landscaping in all single-family development, this just kind of outlines that and the opportunity to reconsider that in the future. Water-wise landscaping for existing development, a lot of this really hits at providing education materials to our existing homeowners and property owners, as well as continuing to analyze our process and how we treat commercial properties and when they need to convert and change over to water-wise landscaping versus sticking with a plan that has been fairly water-intensive for many years. Pool cover requirements, as well as the size of pools, a lot of research went into this, great research by our, one of our planners, Jeff Montague. A lot of credit goes to him in looking at this. And then the graph there, you could see it shows the number of pool permits that we've issued as a city between 2024 and 2025, at least 2025 was to about September. But you can see that in our RS zone properties, that's where the majority of those permits have been issued, and really those are usually on larger lots. So you've got a large lot that's already using a lot of water to landscape their land, their property, as well as, you know, a pool that's taking up a lot of water as well. One consideration is that as we move to the future and we encourage new development and with our East Gate, as well as the West Layton Business Center, that the uses that come in, that we make sure that we look at things like data centers or other water-intensive uses and make sure that we might have regulations to regulate that. There are water-efficient data centers out there, but the bulk of them use a lot of water, and a lot of the water loss happens with evaporation because of how hot the servers are and things like that, and loss through the pipes. Water quality considerations, really just parking lot pollution abatement, just the way that we can identify, we can simply just modify our ordinance to change some of the landscaping standards around our parking lots to, as the water drains out of them, that we can use the landscaping to help filter out the water and make it more clean. Water quality and our riparian corridors, we've got, you know, a handful of streams in our city that converge and come together, you know, as they make their way through the city. But identifying ways that we can make sure that when there's development next to those rivers and streams, that, you know, it's being done so and that there's some buffers that are provided, so that way any pollution doesn't make its way there. This one, I'll just skip over this quickly, but again, our city staff is doing a great job at improving our operations. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the water element.
Council, questions?
Just an odd one.
Yeah.
It said, in order to have turf, it has to be larger than eight feet wide?
Yes.
And it would seem that you'd have it the other way.
Yeah, and so that's a great question. So some research that's been done by Weber Basin and some others is that they've identified that any areas that have turf grass in them that are less than eight feet are water inefficient. So when we have park strips, for example, that are only four and a half feet wide, you can go to the plumbing store or a sprinkler store and get a sprinkler head that says it's only going to shoot three feet, but it still usually shoots greater than that. And so there's water that gets, you know, overshot.
What do you consider turf?
Oh, so turf, what we're saying is turf grass, like real grown grass, not artificial turf.
Oh, not artificial.
Yep. No, and that's a great.
That makes difference, because to me turf is artificial.
No, that's a great clarifying question, because in the in-state statute, as well as in our water, this element, we talk about turf grass, but even at the planning commission meeting, there was one member in the public that was confused and understood turf as artificial turf and not turf grass.
But now, okay, artificial turf. If I can put that on one-foot strips. There must be some percentage of the area or something.
Yeah, so, yeah.
You can't do your whole yard in artificial.
Right, yeah, you can't do your whole yard that way. Our water efficient, or, yeah, our water efficient landscape ordinance still requires that you have plantings.
Right.
And so if you were to do artificial turf, it'd be similar to if you were to just do a rock bed. So you do have to incorporate planting somewhere, but you, it doesn't prohibit anyone from doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if there's no more questions, then council, I'll look for action to open the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing.
No, open, we need to open it on this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, hey, why don't we open it? Okay?
Okay.
Let's open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's anyone in the audience that wished to speak on this particular topic, then you're more than welcome to, once again, stand up to the mic and state your name and their city. Go ahead.
Mike Kalender, Annes Layton. How are you going to address water quality in stormwater in this, in the plan? Have you, can you identify a little bit of what you're going to do? Most of you know that Case Creek is an impaired waterway, which a lot of the stormwater actually flows into Case Creek, so how are you going to do that?
That's a great question. So I'll just go back to the slide here. So one of the things that we identified in the water element and those considerations is that with the riparian corridors, recognizing that the land uses that are there, that we might need to have additional setbacks, there's actually quite a few neighborhoods within the city where the lots go right to the center line of the stream, for example. So then you get decks and homes that are getting up really close to that. And then you also have, you know, hard surfaces that are there, so then you, any materials, so if somebody's working on a boat or an RV or something and something spills, and it might make its way there. So one of the things that was recommended by the resources that we looked at was having greater, having this, you could see right, actually, yeah, it's just in the image, you could see the stream, and then it says a riparian zone on either side. So really, making sure that whatever natural vegetation is there, that that is preserved, and we don't build into those areas, so then that natural vegetation can filter out, you know, some of those things. And then with, you know, parking lot areas, incorporating elements that we don't currently require in our code, such as bio swells, where the water has to go through the plants and the different materials that are placed there before it even makes it to the storm drain, and then further down into the system. So those are some of the considerations that are included in there. Let's see, and then, let's see, when it comes to the riparian corridors, additional setbacks, and identifying, specifically, the other thing was the types of uses that we would allow, you know, next to some of these areas. Maybe, you know, there's certain land uses that aren't, like a residential land use is going to be more appropriate than maybe an industrial land use. So then where those land uses are there, can we identify ways to better mitigate the impacts? Hopefully that addresses the.
I have more questions.
Okay. Yep, happy to.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Okay, if there's no more comments, then I'll bring it back to the council to close the public hearing and take action on Ordinance 25-24.
Madam Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and, we did, and adopt Ordinance 25-24 to add in the general plan to add the water use and preservation element.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Once again, this is public hearings, we'll do a roll call vote. I'll start down here with Councilmember Bloxham.
I vote yes.
Okay.
Did you? Go ahead, you're fine. I actually, I actually thought that the planning commission idea of not allowing those phrases in there to be treated as policy adopted by the council. So as long, I'm voting yes with the understanding that that was for informational purposes. Councilmember Smith Edmondson and I had that discussion in the work meeting. I appreciate all the work that's been done, just want to make sure that those are not policy determinations that have been made by the council.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Morris.
I agree. To keep the general plan general, my vote's aye.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Smith Edmondson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, there you have it. It's unanimous. Okay, that was the last item of business that we have on our agenda tonight. Does anybody have any unfinished business at this time? If not, I want to acknowledge, and I should have done this earlier, and I apologize, but Zach, thank you for sharing your birthday cookies with us. His birthday is next week, so with that, I also want to, yeah, I still have a ways to go. We all want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy the time with your families and friends this beginning of the holiday season, and don't forget Monday night for our lighting ceremony. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for being here.